Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, 2019. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge. We actually have the scouts. We have Weeblos and Boy Scout from Troop 524, PAC 524. Would you come up and lead the pledge for us, gentlemen? And then stay there afterwards because I'm going to have you introduce yourselves, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, hang on a second there, guys. All right, well, thank you. So what are we doing tonight? What do we -- somebody want to take the point and tell me why you're here?
We are doing this for a requirement that we have to know how the government works and see what it's like.
Oh, excellent. That would be very handy to know. Why don't we go through and introduce each other? Why don't you introduce yourselves?
I'm Isaac.
You can just hold the mic and hand it to me.
I'm Gerald.
Or I'll just hold it.
I'm Joe.
I'm Alex.
I'm Tyler.
I'm Timothy.
I'm Joe.
Well, there you go. Guys, thanks a lot for leading the pledge. Thanks for being here tonight. Hopefully, we won't bore you too much. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Skoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. First item on our agenda then is to adopt this evening's agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Griscoviac, second by Kicker. Any discussion or corrections? Mr. Brody.
I would ask that under line five of the consent agenda that we'd also add Resolution 19-111, which I believe you guys should have a copy in front of you. It's an additional vacation.
19-111.
Of an easement.
Of an easement. All right. Councilmember Griscoviac, Councilmember Kicker, you all okay with that?
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. All right. Up to approval of the minutes from the October 1st meeting.
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move approval of the October 1st meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the minutes are approved. We have one, two, three, four items on our consent agenda this evening. Panicked. I was still on the HRA meeting and I went, where's the rest of my agenda items? All right. The first item on our consent agenda is actually item two on our agenda this evening if you're following along. It's to approve a gambling premises permit for Competition Cheer Spirit Booster Club at Carboni's Pizza and Coon Rapids Billiards. The city received a lawful gambling premises permit application from the Competition Cheer Spirit Booster Club for Carboni's Pizza Coon Rapids Billiards, 8525 Cottonwood Street. This gambling premises location had previously been handled by Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association. However, Carboni's Pizza, Coon Rapids CR Billiards gave that organization notice and now has signed a lease agreement with the Competition Cheer Spirit Booster Club to conduct charitable gambling at their location. They currently operate at one additional location, which is Pappy's Cafe, and state charitable gambling law requires premises permits for gambling activities be approved or denied by the city council. So with this one, we'll be looking to adopt Resolution 19-101, a resolution concurring with issuance of a gambling premises permit for the Competition Cheer Spirit Booster Club at Carboni's Pizza CR Billiards, 8525 Coon Rapids -- I'm sorry, Cottonwood Street Northwest. Next item is to adopt Resolution 19-103, authorizing the sale of tax forfeited property. Anoka County periodically auctions off properties that have been forfeited to the state of Minnesota due to non-payment of property taxes. State statutes allow the city or other entity to acquire tax forfeited properties for various public purposes or redevelopment. And the most recent batch of Anoka County properties includes only one parcel in Coon Rapids, and that's Lot 1A, Block 1, Parkshire, 29XX, 113th Avenue. It's unbuildable and will be potentially conveyed to the adjacent property owner or owners and combined. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 19-103, authorizing the disposal and conveyance of tax forfeited property. Next item on our consent agenda is item four on this evening's agenda, and that's to set the hearing date for miscellaneous assessments, 2019-2. The Board of Adjustments and Appeals is expected to conduct this hearing on December 5th, 2019, and will make a recommendation to the city council at their December 17th, 2019 meeting. Staff will incorporate the process in the required mailing to the property owners. These assessments include services provided to taxpayers, in most cases code enforcement violations. The terms of repayment are determined by the amount being assessed, and the proposed assessments are categorized by the number of years to be assessed and the interest rate recommended. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 19-102, miscellaneous assessment declaring the cost to be assessed, ordering preparation of the proposed assessment roll, and ordering the public hearing for November 6th, 2019, on the proposed assessment roll. And then our last item on our consent agenda is to consider Resolutions 19-104, 19-105, 19-106, 19-107, 19-108, 19-109, and 19-111. We're asked to consider the resolutions to set a public hearing for additional vacations in the Port Riverwalk area. The HRA currently has a purchase agreement with Sentra Homes to develop the HRA-owned Port Riverwalk site on the south side of Coon Rapids Boulevard near Avast Street with 136 detached townhomes. On Tuesday, the HRA will consider an amendment to the purchase agreement that will extend the closing date for this property. We've already done that. Resolution of outstanding title matters is the sole reason for the delayed closing. Ongoing title proceedings and discovery of additional easements that need to be vacated have delayed Anoka County's review of a final plat. Staff requests the council adopt the resolutions to begin the process of vacating these easements. A vacation petition may be initiated by the city council upon adoption of a resolution by a four-fifths majority. The resolution calls for a public hearing on November 19th, 2019, for council to consider these vacations. So we're looking to adopt Resolutions 19-104, 19-105, 19-106, 19-107, 19-108, 19-109, and 19-111, which calls for a public hearing on November 19th, 2019, for vacations of public roadway, utility, and sanitary sewer easements. And that is our entire consent agenda.
Your honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections or questions?
Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Just not a clarification, but well, maybe a clarification. On point number four on the assessment public hearing, that will be on November 6th, which is a Wednesday, so we wouldn't want our residents to get confused that that's not on the regular Tuesday night due to the election. Just wanted to point that out.
So a good time to remind them that there's a school board election.
Correct.
Squeeze her all in. All right. Any other discussion or questions on the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that is carried. Next, we are looking at item six, Planning Case 19-16, Consider a Reasonable Accommodation Request, 12339 Gladiola Street, Grant Johnson. This never actually went to the planning commission though, correct?
Correct.
It's just got a planning case number?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Harlecker or who's going to do the -- Mr. Brody?
I'll just give you a little bit of overview of what we're thinking. Mr. Harlecker will present some opening remarks from the city on the application from city staff. I would then suggest that we open the public hearing. I see the applicant's attorney is here. I presume he's going to want to make a presentation, have an opportunity to do so, so I think we'd suggest that he be allowed to do that first. If the council obviously has any questions for either staff or the applicant, that would be a good time to do it, and then open it up to any other folks that would like to comment during that public hearing. And obviously, we have a couple of emails that we'd like to include in that public hearing, and then when we're done, we can close the public hearing, and you guys can begin your deliberations. So that's how I propose we kind of proceed tonight, so I believe Mr. Harlecker is ready with sort of a summary of the staff report.
Okay. As a clarification, Mr. Brody, I opened the public hearing before or after the attorney has presented?
Before the attorney.
Before. Okay, all right, so that's part of that process. All right, thank you. Mr. Harlecker?
All right, mayor and council members, what I'd like to do is just kind of give a summary of the staff report and kind of take people how we got to tonight. Back in June of this year, council adopted ordinance that established the rules and regulations for a reasonable accommodations request. Late July, city received the formal application. On August 12th, we asked for some additional information and deemed the application incomplete. Over the month of August, city staff worked with the applicant to get the necessary information, and then on September 6th, the application was deemed complete and put on tonight's The reasonable accommodation that the applicant is requesting is to allow 10 unrelated residents in a sober living home, where the maximum allowed by code is six. Stated earlier, the property is at 12339 Gladiola Street. It is a single-family dwelling. It currently is a licensed residential property with six residents. The property includes five bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a detached two-car garage. It's located in a single-family residential neighborhood, that's Zone LDR 2, and the property abuts Highway 10 to the rear. When the council adopted the ordinance establishing the rules and regulations for reasonable accommodations, they included seven factors that the council and staff considers when evaluating the request. And what I'd like to do is go through those seven factors and how they relate to this request. The first one is whether there is a qualifying disability, and the applicant has submitted documentation that they do meet that criteria for residents having the qualifying disability. The second criteria is whether the resident request is needed to allow a disabled person equal opportunity to use and enjoy the dwelling or to live in a particular neighborhood without a person with disabilities. Staff does not believe that the applicant has provided sufficient documentation that 10 residents is the minimum number of residents to have an equal opportunity to use and enjoy the dwelling. The applicant has not shown how adding four more people will enhance the resident's quality of life by limiting the effects of the disability. Number three, whether their request is reasonable considering potential impact on surrounding uses, the extent to which the accommodation meets the stated need, and other alternatives that may meet the need. Again, the applicant has not provided sufficient documentation that six residents cannot provide the benefits needed for a successful sober living. And secondly, the potential adverse impacts on the neighbors relates to parking. The proposed parking layout has two cars in the garage and eight cars in the driveway. Stacking eight cars in the driveway back-to-back will require that the cars be moved regularly so that others can leave and park. That'll be a disruptive factor on the neighbors. The fourth criteria is the number, nature, and extent of their requested accommodation in relation to physical limitations of the building and site. Staff believes that the applicant does meet that requirement. Whether their request would constitute a fundamental alteration of the city's regulations, policies, and procedures, again, staff believes the applicant does meet that criteria. Number six is whether the request would impose an undue financial or administrative burden on the city. Staff does believe that the applicant meets that criteria. And number seven, any other factors that may have a bearing on their request. Staff found three factors that believe have a bearing on this request. The first one is the number of bathrooms. There are only two bathrooms in the house for 10 unrelated people. Access to the lower-level bathroom is through a lower-level bedroom, and access to that bathroom is limited to the four residents sleeping in the bedroom. House rules prohibit other residents from going through that bedroom to access the bathroom. Now, the number of residents in the bedrooms, applicant states that the house rules, maximum number of residents in a bedroom is two. The request includes four residents in the lower-level bedroom, violating that limitation. And the third factor is kitchen use. The applicant states that all the residents are responsible for purchasing and cooking their own food. They're also responsible for cleaning up after themselves. Having 10 people cooking their own meals will be difficult in a typical single-family kitchen. Typical single-family home kitchen is not designer-equipped for multiple people to cook individual meals at the same time. Staff's recommendation, number one, that we hold the public hearing, as the city attorney indicated, and staff is recommending that the city council deny the request for reasonable accommodation based on the following findings. The first finding, the request does not show the extent of the accommodation meets the stated need. The applicant has not provided sufficient documentation that six residents cannot provide the benefits needed for a successful sober living program, or that the increase from six unrelated persons to 10 is specifically needed to accommodate those with a disability. The second finding, the request is not reasonable considering a potential impact on surrounding uses. Request will adversely impact adjacent property. Purpose includes parking up to 10 cars on site, which will require the cars to be regularly moved around and thereby disrupting the neighbors whose house abuts the driveway. And the third finding relates to the other factors, the number of residents in a bedroom. The rule states that they can only have two residents in a bedroom. They are proposing four in the lower bedroom. The number of bathrooms, there are only two bathrooms for 10 unrelated people, and access to the lower level is limited to those residing in that lower-level bedroom. And the third factor is the kitchen use. The applicant states that all residents are responsible for purchasing and cooking their own food, and typical single-family kitchens are not designed or equipped to accommodate that type of use. And with that, staff will answer any questions and...
Council, any questions from Mr. Harlecker or staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, guess not. All right, so we will open the public hearing, and it's probably going to be the representative starting with it? Okay. We'll open the public hearing for the case of reasonable accommodation. If you could please state your name and...
My name is Fabian Hoffner, H-O-F-F-N-E-R, and I'm an attorney, and I represent Marriachi House, who is the applicant before the city council tonight. Thank you, your honor, and thank you, members of the city council, for letting me, giving me the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I just want to go through, generally speaking, what's happening here and how we came to this position. Marriachi Residence is a sober house. I don't think anyone is denying that. I don't think the staff is denying that it's a bona fide sober house. Everybody that lives in that sober house is a resident of Coon Rapids, and they have to sign an agreement that they will abstain from drugs and alcohol. The purpose of them living there is so that they can live together as a therapeutic community to live together in order to get well. You know, I've seen a number of news articles that talk about the problems that society has been having with drug and alcohol abuse, and this is, I submit, one of the answers to that. Letting people live with each other in this community of people so that they can live together and go to AA meetings together to become a community of support for each other. And they have to abstain from drugs and alcohol. They have to have a minimum days of, 30 days of sobriety. They have to submit to drug and alcohol screening. They have to attend AA meetings three times a week. They have to maintain 30 hours of employment or full-time status, maintain contact with their sponsor, and submit to a full background check. And one of the things here that I'm grateful for, the city attorney and for the city staff that they told you about the rights that sober people have under the Federal Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act, and I was grateful that the city did the local amendment to their charter or to their rules, which provides that when there is a sober house, that the city grants them a reasonable accommodation, because that's frankly what the law is. But here, I think I disagree with the conclusions of the city planner respectfully, because I think that there's a couple of things in here that, well, I'm going to tell you what I agree with. I agree with the first whole page and the second page up until the analysis. All of that, I think, is extremely well-written and accurate. But, and also, number one, these are folks with a qualifying disability. And like I said, this is, everyone in there is living there for the purposes of staying sober. You are going to hear tonight from a number of members who are participating in the program at the Marriachi House, which will give you an idea about why people need to have more than six people, why they need to have a therapeutic community. And they're all going to talk to you about the fact that too few people don't provide the therapy of people being able to watch out for each other, and too many people means that they don't spend enough time with each other on a one-to-one basis to see when people are getting well and when people are not getting well. And I'm going to, I submit to you that you're going to hear plenty of information tonight from citizens of Coon Rapids who are living in this environment that's going to help you understand why that therapeutic number is so important. We're asking for 10, the code allows 6. So all we're asking for is four more people to allow this community to exist. I agree with number four. Number five, I agree with. Number six, I agree with. I'm going to make a couple of comments about parking. Parking's been litigated all over the country, and many, many cities and some counties have used parking as an excuse not to grant people a reasonable accommodation. And I agree, frankly, as a homeowner myself in a different city, that it becomes a big deal for people when all kinds of cars are going back and forth. And one of the things I think that we need to say here is that we want to be good neighbors. The whole purpose of this coming to talk to you and asking for this reasonable accommodation, we don't want to create a ruckus. We've never, we've never had a police call out there. You know, the whole purpose of it is for people not to have police calls. The whole purpose is for people to become good citizens again. And the parking issue, it gets very touchy, because some cities have used that as an excuse not to grant a reasonable accommodation to otherwise qualified applicants. The number of bathrooms, you're going to see that people are, there's going to be residents are going to come up if, you know, I argue that the law says that if a family of 12 can live in a house, mom and dad and 10 kids, then a group of sober people who are existing for the purposes of their alcoholism can live in this, or their drug addiction and getting better, can live in a sober house. They're not having any problems with the two bathrooms. It's 10 guys in two bathrooms, four bathrooms on one and, four men on one, six on the other one. And the number of residents in the bedrooms, you know, that is within the, it's within the fire code. I mean, there's no safety issues. No one has, no one has brought up the fact that people are living unsafely here. And that, of course, is a big part of why this group is a member of the Minnesota Association of Sober Homes. They come in and they do these inspections because it's in their best interest for these houses to stay sober, or to stay sober, but to stay safe as well. And there are, there's a total of, there's a total of 907 square feet of bedroom space, which means it's more than 90 square feet of sleeping space per resident, which is well within, well within the guidelines of the fire code. And as far as the kitchen, I don't know, you know, I lived in, I lived in a fraternity house in college, and we had a regular kitchen in there, and we all used the kitchen. We had, we cooked our own food. We, you know, it wasn't, you know, one of those gourmet kitchens, but these guys are doing that. They're making it work. They're not causing a ruckus. All they want is to be left alone to get better the way, I know that all the city council members want them to get better. And, you know, with the rise of the problem of drug and alcohol abuse in this, in this community and in our state, I urge the city to, I urge the city to grant this reasonable accommodation. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So with the public hearing, do we want to limit it to like three minutes? Can we do that? Mr. Brody?
Have we opened the public hearing already?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. And so I actually had a few follow-up questions if council wouldn't mind being back up.
First of all, thank you for coming in tonight. Mr. Mayor, is that all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
I'm looking at Mr. Brody, as long as he doesn't tell me it's not okay.
Thank you for coming in tonight and sharing your perspective, and I hope to hear from more people, so I don't want you to think that I've made up my mind on this yet, because I want to hear from everybody. We've certainly gotten some input from people along the way, and I've read the materials that you submitted as well. One of the things that's in the materials, and I'm wondering if you can help me just better understand it a little more, is right now, in the application materials and in kind of your submission, it says that the house is up and running. Is that, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and so it's got, is it fully occupied right now?
Yes.
Okay. And is it financially viable right now?
Yes.
Okay. And so it's not seeking additional financial support from the city of Coon Rapids or anyone else?
Not a dime.
And so the accommodation that you're asking for is really in numbers only? Do I understand that right?
Correct.
Okay. And do I also understand it right that the number that you're looking at, which is 10 or proposing is 10, includes an onsite manager? So that would be nine clients, if you will, plus an onsite manager?
That I have to, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, right now, do you have an onsite manager?
Yes.
Okay, so you have like five clients plus an onsite manager, per se. So that's not quite, but almost a twofold increase in clients. Is that right?
She, I'm going to introduce, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Please, if you could.
Yes, hi, I'm Krista Johnson, owner of Marriachi Recovery Housing.
Okay.
I can help you with some of these questions.
Sure, and I appreciate both of you being up here to respond. So is it, you're serving five clients now, and you're proposing to serve nine clients but have an onsite manager? Or is the onsite manager also a client? Help me understand that.
So we have a house manager.
Yeah.
And the house manager oversees the other residents in the house.
He's talking about numbers.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we're currently, we have nine residents and a house manager currently.
That's what you have currently, or that's what you're requesting?
Both. Both.
Okay, so right now, you have nine residents plus an onsite manager, so...
Correct.
You're wanting the variance to accommodate what you currently have on that site?
Correct.
Okay. When did you all... When did you all acquire this property?
Um, November two thousand of last year, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. And how long have you had nine onsite?
We stayed at six for approximately four months before we moved on to, to the ten.
Okay. And the, I saw in the kind of floor plan area and the applications, kind of the bedroom spacing and things like that. And is, is that how it is currently laid out right now?
Other than the residents who desire to rearrange their furniture in their bedroom, which they have, other than that visually on the virtual tour?
Sure.
It is the same number of beds per room kind of configuration. We've added second refrigerators, second freezers, items like that that were necessary to the house to make it more sustainable.
Okay. You know, I think you'll find with this council and this community, broad support for re-entry, reintegration kinds of programs and other supportive programs. One of the concerns that I have, and maybe others will address this as well, and you do see some of this in the media, is not so much the parking or the kitchen space or whatever, but the general overcrowding concern and the whole notion, you know, you've put forward an argument that more is better for therapeutic purposes or for supportive purposes?
Well, I think, I think, I just want to gently correct that.
Please.
Too many, too many is just as bad as not.
And that's, and that's what I wanted to ask, is?
And that's why we've limited to ten in this particular house. We, you know, because too many means that they're not going to be able to talk to each other and, and, and see how each other is doing. So I, yeah, that, a little bit of correction.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. So how is it in, in your decision-making as a business that you decided that, that a single-family home as opposed to a four-plex kind of situation, or some other alternative situation, still in a residential neighborhood, was the appropriate thing to get to this level of ten?
Because the four-plex situation wouldn't have that community of ten people together unnecessarily. It would have four and one, four and one. We have a house manager that is overseeing, making sure everybody's okay and doing well that is in one house. In, in a separate wall or separate entrance, you wouldn't have that supervision or accountability. Also, I found that in starting, I have four sober homes. I have a women's home in Ramsey, I have a men's home in Blaine, and a men's home in Isani. So in starting up each home with the lower numbers, I found it wasn't therapeutic, it wasn't a therapeutic community. When I had three guys, four guys, and even six people in this home, what I would find is that people would, you're coming out of thirty days impatient, and it's scary to begin with. So you're in a whole new environment, you're, you're choosing to go to sober living. Nobody's forcing these people to come here. They know it's the right path that they need to go to. They want to live in the community they're from. They're from Coon Rapids, Anoka County, and they're coming to and choosing to live in this home. So in that retrospect, when I see four or six people in a home and that number, I see people coming out of thirty days impatient, they're scared, they isolate, they go to their own room that's by themselves without a roommate, and they isolate and they become depressed. I walk in the home, I'll see somebody in the dark watching TV depressed by themselves. And that's what I see with four to six people generally when we're starting a home. And it's because there isn't enough going on. When we get to the shared bedrooms, that's where things happen, because you can't isolate in a bedroom when you have a roommate, you can't sleep all day in a bedroom when you have a roommate, and you can't, that causes people not to go into that depression. And isolation and depression are some of the hugest problems when it comes to recovery. So by eliminating the isolation and, you know, the depression, that helps our success immensely. Not to mention the peer support of, when you do come home, you're not sitting in the living room by yourself. There's one or two other guys watching football, watching hockey, watching a movie that you get to be with. So that's where it comes in. The size of the house, it, it depends on the bedrooms. If it's not big enough for two beds, it's not a two-bed bedroom. If it is, it makes sense. You know what I mean? Uh, smallest room would be like, okay, this could be a single-bedroom for the house manager with a double bed. That makes sense. It has to make sense. It has to have adequate space for everything, including the kitchen, including everything that, that's necessary for sober living.
So I appreciate some of your anecdotal input in it. Do you have, and, and we all, I think, have different, you know, life experiences and bring different things to the table. I mean, one of the things that I do outside of the city council work is I'm a child protection lawyer. And so I'm often giving case plans to parents and saying to them, you need to get sober to get your kids back, kind of thing. And that then puts them into inpatient, then outpatient, aftercare, and sober housing. And, and the input that I get sometimes from some of them, without any comment with respect to your particular business, okay? But the input I get from them sometimes is, there's a lack of privacy that is, is in the home, there are people relapsing all around me, it's not a good environment for me, I really want out, it's too crowded, and things like that. And I'm not suggesting for a moment there aren't successful sober homes that have a good therapeutic environment. But those are the things that, that I think some are concerned about, that I'm concerned about, and want to have some peace of mind about with respect to a particular piece of property. So do you have any, in addition to the anecdotal kind of experience that you're sharing with us, do you have any learned treatises, peer review articles that say ten is better than six?
Can I answer that?
Please, yeah.
There've been, there've been a couple of cases. One of them was the New Haven case, out in New Haven, Connecticut.
Connecticut, yeah.
Where, where the judge, it was a federal district case, where the judge, based upon some evidence, found that fifteen was the upper level and ten was the lower level. And that, I don't know.
Fifteen and what kind of property?
Fifteen, I, I don't know that.
Okay, fair enough.
I don't know the answer to that. But I, but, but he said that, and that was based upon some psychological, psychological testimony in a district, in a district court trial. There's been, there's been a couple of other articles that talk about the, the heft of people in a sober house. I, I was involved in a case in, in Denver, Colorado, where the expert testimony said basically between ten and fifteen. He said it could go down to nine and maybe seventeen, but, you know, you start getting outside of those, you get, it's outside of those numbers, you're not going to get what we're looking for, which is the sweet spot. I really like what you said about, about the, the business relating to not a good sober house. And the fact is that, that if these sober houses are run correctly, and we say that we are one of them, if you use alcohol or drugs, these other guys, because of the community, are going to know you're high or drunk. And this, they can demand you take a test, and if you're high, you have to leave. That's part of the, that's part of the agreement of being there. And so it's one of the reasons that the Minnesota Association of Sober Houses goes around and, and does all the training that they do, and does all the inspections that they do, and does all the, the work on all of the, the paperwork that they do. You know, people have to sign an agreement, and I think I might have included some of that in your packets tonight, that say exactly what their, what their rules are, and if they can't or won't follow the rules, they're out.
I appreciate the rule. Do you know if that association has weighed in on the numbers?
They have not, no, no.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Yes?
I had a question, but he asked it.
Oh, all right, okay, all right. Okay, very good. All right. So let's continue the public hearing then.
Your honor, you asked a question about, you know, potential.
Yes.
Obviously, as a council, you have control over your own body here, and if you would like to limit that, or perhaps if there aren't any new comments, things like that, that probably would be advisable. And I think a time limit wouldn't be given the amount of folks here. Would probably be a good guidance for folks, if we limited it to three minutes, whatever the council so chooses, and then maybe encouraging people, you know, to have, if they have something new to say, they can do that.
All right. So let's, whoever else would like to come up and speak, we'd like to be very efficient here. And so if you've got something new to offer, give us your name and, and limit comments to a couple minutes. Please give us your name and address, please.
Your honor, your honor, council members, my name's Anthony Tiverberg. My address is one-two-three-three-one Gladiola Street. So I live in one-two-three-three-old Gladiola Street. Our property line is less than a foot from the driveway, and our driveways are separated by six feet. I'm a paid-on-call firefighter for CRFD, and Brianna and I are both financial crimes consultants with, with a large bank. We have an almost two-year-old boy, Theodore. Due to the number of people next door, the fact that the house sits northwest of us, the road's kind of angled, I can't have my windows open because the house fills with cigarette smoke. Last winter, the cigarette smoke was sucked in by my furnace. For those same reasons, we can't enjoy our yard anymore in the spring, summer, or fall. Another issue that I have with this property is the privacy. The tenants of this house are expected to be there for six months, but six months is a rarity, as many of them are only two or three months there at a time. That, but even if they are there for six months, that equates to twenty people per year, two-hundred per decade is what they're asking for. Coming and going, they're going to know our schedules, when we're home, what we're doing, what we bought, et cetera. I've spoken to many of the tenants at length, many who are actually in the crowd right now. Every single one of them that I've spoken to has said that they would not feel this, feel comfortable with this home next to their family. Another aspect that I know many people will bring up, my neighbors will mention later, is the road, the roadway traffic has skyrocketed. Another thing to remember is that each one of these ten occupants will also have family and friends that are coming by on a routine basis. It has turned into a freeway out there. My son will no longer be able to ride his bike down the street, walk down the road. He won't be able to play, uh, street hockey like I grew up doing in a residential area. Another thing I wanted to bring up is the homeowner character. When they bought the house, Krista, the owner, told us that there were four guys moving in and that they were, they were going through sobriety and had been sober for over a year. There was no mention of ten people, there was no mention of the hard drugs that were also being used, and that they were often felons. We talked to her at length about alcoholism and what we would do to provide a positive environment next door, thinking that these were four gentlemen who were just trying to find their way. The main contact, uh, house manager said that he was told that there'd be enough bedrooms, living areas, parking spaces when agreed to be the house manager. He was told that there'd be a large three-thousand-ish square foot home, and the owners frequently told them not to do anything that upsets the neighbors, because there's a meeting in front of the city council. But what now happens is that this meeting is here. She said they can work on their community service hours by cutting the grass at another home or doing menial tasks. She mentioned over and over how there's an arduous application and vetting process, yet there is none. And as you can see in the packets that were presented, she didn't provide anything for that. In her documentation, she, she mentions that there's North Star and how her tenants can use that, but they can't get to their several weekly treatments as it stops in Fridley and Target Field on a very limited basis, nor can they take the bus, as it's a four-hour-long round trip to their treatment center, which I have printed off from Metro Transit to show. Furthermore, I'm almost done, I promise. I tried researching myself for the best recovery outcomes and ideals for the number of people. There's no study that mentions that ten is the magic number, and I did a lot of research. Obviously, they'll have their own. The two factors, though, that every study that I saw stated was community and family support. But this house has lost the community's support by Krista's rampant disregard for established rules of the community and respect of the neighbor, the neighbors. There was no discussions about what she was really doing prior to moving in with the neighbors, no permits for the sidewalk and patio that she had the house manager put in. She has ten people living inside the house despite being denied her request to have that many, and the tenants have been parking on the street for the last couple of months despite the map that she's attached. There's not enough distance. Right now, her house manager has a GMC truck at nineteen feet, two tenants have Rams, the Chevy and Paul in the driveway sixteen point seven, even the tiny Saturn Ion is fifteen point four-one-six-seven feet. However, her parking map that she's included shows five cars at fifteen feet. That just doesn't fit. Furthermore, every time someone has to move, as we've talked about, they're, they have to move all the cars. So in conclusion, as the direct neighbor, I urge you to please do not accept this accommodation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address counsel during the public hearing?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Give us your name and address, please.
I'm Matthew Streep. I live at one-two-three-two-zero Gladiola Street. I'm a direct diagonal neighbor to the residents that we're talking about. I appreciate you allowing us to share a few concerns. I'm a licensed engineer. I've been working for fifteen years. I'm a business owner of an engineering firm in Coon Rapids. As an engineer and, and a business owner, I take responsibility for the public's health and safety very seriously with respect to my work. This business is statistically dangerous. I'm not going to say that this particular home is, but statistically, forty to sixty percent have a relapse within one year. It is not good odds, but just statistically dangerous. I'm not saying that this particular business is that dangerous, but just want to be clear. But I, I don't believe that this business is, is really considering the well-being of our neighborhood and is not a good fit for our neighbors. And I have three very good reasons, among other people will share, of why, that I don't believe that it's a, a good fit for our neighborhood. First, as, as you mentioned, it's blatantly defying local laws and ordinances. The first being that if the ordinance says six people, then we don't pack ten people in until we get approval. That, that's a disregard for the law. Since moving here, it's had ten people, give or take, but certainly not the six, that if I were establishing a credible business, I would abide by the laws, and then once I got approval, then I would increase my membership. That, that's due process. That's, that's just makes sense, and that's just good business, and that's good relationships with the community. You're trying to, to invest in and be, you know, a good, healing community. But there was no door knocking or asking for permission or building rapport by abiding, hey, we're abiding by this ordinance now. And now they're asking for a waiver. Why bother asking for a waiver? They've been doing it already. Is anybody here, are any of you going to go out to their, you know, to the property and audit them when they put more than twelve or fourteen or sixteen? I mean, we don't, we don't, they, they're not even saying there's a magic number, so maybe tomorrow they'll find out, well, you know, ten isn't the right number. I, I think fourteen's the best number for us, but, you know, we don't need to get a waiver for that right now. We'll just pack them in, and then when somebody gets on our case, then, then maybe we'll re-present this case in a year. I, I don't know. I don't have any, I don't have any good trust at this point, being that it's broken on the, the first one being that they're defying local laws. Secondly, when it comes to traffic, we talked about the, or, excuse me, the, the other laws here. I saw a city vehicle drive up to the house just this Friday, October eleventh, about two in the afternoon. I was informed that no building permits were pulled on the street for any work being done, and, and this, the city official pulled up to several houses, not just this one in particular. And there's a reason permits are enforced. I, I'm an engineer. I care about the safety and well-being of the, the community. Permits, they, they protect the tenants, they protect the neighborhood, they, they want to make sure that construction is being done in a very formal and, and approved, construction's being done in a very safe manner, and that the, right, building materials are being used. There's many reasons you guys are aware of, that, that building permits are enforced. And they have not asked for any building permits, and I actually have an Exhibit A that I can pass on that shows that clearly work is being done. This was taken last Friday. Clearly, work is being done, if you want to take a look closer, you can, if you can't see from here. But no permits were being pulled. You know, what, what's going to happen when they need a new furnace next year? Permit going to be pulled? Are we, you know, are we going to install this unsafely where, you know, we have a gas issue, there's a gas explosion next, you know, next year? Oh, house, house, no permit was pulled, you know? So I, I mean, I, I just feel like that there's a little, little to no regard for safety. We heard about, they, they care about the safety of them. I, I'm not seeing that. And then lastly, I'll try to keep it quick here, the disregard for the, the neighborhood of our, our vulnerable adults and our children. I've been here four years, I'm a stone's throw away from their residence, and I was not able to bike with my children this summer on the road. I, I bike with my children every summer, not able to. They're all under ten years old, and we've had a dramatic increase. In fact, it's over a three-hundred percent increase from when I finished work into the evening. Three-hundred, at least three-hundred percent. I, I did not do a, a full trend study, but in my expert opinion, it's, it's an above three-hundred percent. And last summer, I was able to bike with them, but that, and I, and I'm with them. I, I can't, there's just so much traffic in a given five-minute period, five, ten, fifteen-minute period, over the course of several hours in an evening.[1736.16] And last summer, I was able to bike with them, but that, and I'm with them. I can't, there's just so much traffic in a given five-minute period, five, ten, fifteen-minute period, uh, over the course of several hours in an evening. Um, and I measured over several evenings. It's not just a one instantaneous measurement, yes, I'm an engineer. Um, so, you know, just looking at that, and with a relapse rate of forty to sixty percent statistically, they're not good odds. It only takes one driver. It doesn't take five, ten people to cause an accident. It only takes one of these ten residents, right, to relapse and then come home driving recklessly on Gladiola, and then an elderly person's walking along the side of the street, or my child's playing on the front lawn. It only takes, it only takes one. And we're rolling the dice of that, you know, with my, with my children, with the elderly vulnerable in the neighborhood, and, and, and so they're, we, I believe in second chances, but at the cost of the first chance, they're playing with our, our, um, you know, it's risking our children and our neighborhood. Um, so for these three reasons and others, I'm sure, I would like, if I would make a motion, I'd make a motion to deny the waiver, but I'd also deny the residents this business on this street altogether because they've proved that they don't care about their tenants, they're not, um, to the degree that I would expect. They sacrificed the neighborhood's vulnerable adults and children locally and not even obeyed government laws to date. So it's a high risk, high danger, uh, public nuisance already, and it's only gonna be a drain on the city's resources. Um, I've been here, like I said, four years, and it's a very safe community. Uh, we spoke with a police officer when we moved in. He said he'd had not a single case of, um, coming to this, this, uh, area in twenty years. I mean, that's, I heard that, I was like, oh, I feel so much safer moving here. And then this summer, my wife and I can't even, can't even go outside and leave our children in the yard thinking they're gonna be safe with the statistics. And, you know, you roll the dice enough times, the house wins. It's just, that's how we feel it. So prevention is better than cure. Let's not be here a year from now saying, hey, we had some accidents happen, let's kick 'em out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, everybody.
Okay. If you want to give it to the clerk, she'll provide it. Name and address, please.
Uh, my address, uh, one, two, three, three, nine Gladiola Street, northwest, Coon Rapids. Um, I am the house manager at the Coon Rapids Sober House. Um, I've been there since it opened up, uh, at the end of last, um, November. And I guess just a couple of things that I wanted to touch on. Um, as far as the residents being from six to ten, um, I can personally attest to, um, ten residents being better than six. Uh, when the house first opened up, uh, the first few months was six. And I mean, just like Krista was saying, you know, if you're in the living room watching a movie, you might be by yourself. But if the house is full, there's two or three other guys out there. Um, and I know a lot of what carries a lot of us alcoholics and addicts through is, um, sharing our experience, strength, and hope. And if you're the only one in the living room because you can only have six, you have nobody to do that very easily and accessibly with. Um, so that I believe is, is one of the biggest things. Um, as far as some of the issues that were brought up, as in kitchen space or bathroom space, um, we do have an extra refrigerator and freezer space. Um, we cook meals together, so, you know, two or three guys will cook dinner, or one guy will cook and feed three or four other people. Um, so it really hasn't been an issue yet. Um, as far as the bathrooms go, you know, some people like to shower in the mornings, some people like to shower at night. Uh, we definitely make it work. Uh, we do keep Febreeze pretty handy, but, uh, um, other than that, there's really no issues. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Did we get your name?
Chad.
Chad, okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Goldsmith. I live down on one, two, three, six, three Gladiola Street. Um, I wanted to bring it to you guys' attention. The safety in that neighborhood has gone down way, way, way bad. My daughter, uh, about two years ago, I had fought with the bus company to try and get her bus stop moved. They had actually moved her bus stop to the end of the street. Now, my daughter had to walk home from the bus stop, which is passing by that sober house. Okay, I'm not against sober houses, but I'm not really for it in my neighborhood. Growing up, being a, um, being a codependent in a situation, I've dealt with stuff like this, and I know that there is relapse. It, very much so, I know it's a relapse, you know, for a lot of people that will happen. Some people it will not, and I just feel that in my heart that this is not a safe environment for these people to be in our neighborhood. One, they did not bother to contact any of the neighbors to let us know that there was a sober home actually going into our neighborhood. We just found out just recently because of the city council meeting. That was unfair to us in the neighborhood. Um, two, I just want to make sure that you guys understand that there is an elementary school that's right down the street from this place. Three, I don't like the fact that there is so many cars down at the end of the street. It's really hard for me to actually go down the street, to actually bring my daughter to school and make myself to work. It is not fair to me, not fair to the residents of the community in that area when we've got at least four or five cars parked like this, all down there where you can't really drive down the street. I know there's a city ordinance where it comes in the wintertime where you cannot park on the street because the snowplows come through. That is a way where people actually have to move off and they have to be in their own driveways because the snowplows do come through that way, because of the school buses that come through. Like I said, I have a young daughter, and I don't want her walking down past this sober house due to the fact that I know that there is circumstances that actually do happen. They say that if they happen to relapse, they get kicked out. Well, how do you know that they're gonna rehab, or, you know, relapse? My daughter had explained to me just recently that there was something that actually happened. Now, we didn't think nothing of it, didn't, you know, whatever, but to me, that was scary. That was too scary, and that's not something that I want my daughter a part of or near or around. And you gotta remember that there is lots, lots of little kids in that area, and it's not fair to these parents, or to these kids, or to these families that have to go through something like this. Thank you.
Hit the three minutes exactly. Nice.
Hi again, I'm Krista Dodson. Um, me and my husband own Maraki Housing, Recovery Housing, like I talked about. We have several, um, recovery housing. Um, so Maraki, the meaning of the word Maraki, it's a Greek word. It means to put your heart, your soul, and your passion into the work that you do. Um, we picked that word because that's what we, that's what we signify. Our heart and our soul and our passion is in this. Um, my husband, who's here tonight, is a pilot. He's thirty-one years into sobriety.
Excuse me, excuse me, um, will we jump into the public hearing part?
I'm a public, part of the public hearing.
No, no, this is, the public hearing is open to all.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the petitioner can feel free to talk to him. I'm sorry, Krista.
That's all right. So, um, as I was saying, my husband has thirty-one years of sobriety. When he hit thirty years of sobriety, um, we decided it was time to give back to what we've been blessed with. Um, as I said, he's a pilot, I'm a nurse, I'm a realtor. We have, um, investment property. Um, for the last fifteen years, we have real estate investment property that we own and manage. This venture wasn't about money, it was about giving back and giving back to our community that we live in. We're residents of Anoka County, and we decided Anoka County, just like any other county, has, um, a serious substance use disorder problem in their county. And why can't people recover in the county where they live in? Um, everybody coming out of inpatient has to go to Minneapolis or St. Paul, but yet they're from this community. So that was part of our passion in forming this. As I said, it isn't money. If, out of all the jobs we have and we do, um, there's a lot easier ways to make money than to own sober housing. It's not about the money for us, it's about the passion. Um, part of it is that when we have, it has to be financially stable. I mean, we have to purchase a house, put the bunny down on a house, buy all the furniture, get this house up and running. I have to be a MASH member, a city inspection. I have three, four inspections that I have to pass before I ever open. So there's a lot of work involved in it. I put my heart and soul into this business so that I know every one of my residents' names, their individual personalities, I know where they are, what they're doing, and how they're doing in life. So I take a hands-on approach. So we're putting in much more time and energy into this for less monetary value than we are any of our other jobs. So it's not about that. Um, that being said, we do have to, it does have to be a break-even at least, um, thing. And at the six number, it's very hard to do. We have a high level of accountability when we're talking about relapse rate, that's real. But, um, currently, if you look at over my four houses, our relapse rate, we're having an eighty-five percent recovery rate among the four Maraki houses, which is unheard of and phenomenal. So it's because of the time, energy that we put into our houses, our three-tier management system, myself being hands-on, my business manager hands-on, and my house manager hands-on. Every resident in a house has a three-tier management that's looking after them and that cares about them. That costs money. Um, UAs cost money. We don't skimp on UAs. You have to take them regularly to keep the mind active that I don't get to slip up. So, um, that costs money. We have resources. We're reaching out to every resource and providing our residents with amounts of resources and helping them to, um, gain substance and gain value in their recovery. All of that, like I said, I didn't go pick up garage sale furniture. I bought brand-new furniture for that house. If you've looked at the virtual tour, you can see brand-new mattresses, brand-new furniture, brand-new sectionals, brand-new bedding, you know? And we continue to provide brand-new things for the, for the residents of that house. So that takes a lot. So at the ten, at the six, it's not financially stable, having six residents. Could I have six and up their rents? Yes. It would not be financially stable for the residents to come out of inpatient treatment if I was to do that. It wouldn't be a reasonable rent for them to be able to pay, so it would be nonexistent. At the sixth level, it's basically a rental property with no supervision or management. At the ten level, we can run a program where we're talking about eighty-five percent recovery rate and do it well. So that's, that's where we're at with that. Um, like I talked about already, the therapeutic value, I've opened homes with the, there's nothing worse than the first two clients. What do you do with two clients in a sober home? Even at three and four, it's not stable. Even at six, it's not stable. It's not until I get to, um, the nine number before I start seeing that community. In this house, at one point, the residents called themselves a brotherhood. They said, we're not a sober house, we're a brotherhood, because they were that tight with each other and that tight with each other in their recovery that they considered each other's brothers. And it continues that way with each resident and each person that comes through the door. They care about each other, they look after each other, and they will call each other out. They know if somebody is using. They would call them out for the protection of the rest of their brotherhood, and that happens, and it's real. And that's our expectation. So at that point, we also don't put people on the street. If they were to have a relapse, we're talking eighty-five percent recovery rate, fifteen percent, myself or my business manager shows up on site.
You've been here three minutes, I've gotta get to my children, and I don't feel respectful of our time.
All right, sir, sir, you want, I'm running this meeting, you have to stay quiet now, please. And she is well beyond three minutes, but she's also the petitioner, so I'm giving her a little bit more latitude there, but I'm hoping she's about to wrap up.
I am wrapping it up. Okay, so with that, like I said, the therapeutic value, I already spoke enough about that. We have been open since November, almost a year. No police calls, no disruption, no problems, nothing I've ran into, nothing like that. We are improving the property. We improved, we replaced some siding, we did some painting. We have plans, we put a patio, a sidewalk in, we plan on replacing the driveway. We plan on doing a lot of improvements and keeping this property a top quality. Our mission is to have it look better than any other property, if not the same as any other property on that street from the outside. Sorry about going overtime a little bit.
Is anybody else here to address counsel for the public hearing on this?
Hi, so my name's Dylan Corran. I'm a resident of the CR, Coon Rapids, one, two, three, three, nine Gladiola Street, Coon Rapids. Um, yeah, um, my personal experience, uh, I've been in and out of alcoholism for about ten years. I don't look what I've been through, I've been through a lot of stuff. Um, I've been to multiple sober homes. Um, I've done it in the city where most of the sober homes are. Uh, it's kind of hard growing up, because I grew up in a rural area, St. Francis, small town, and that's the way I grew up and I liked it that way. Um, I've been in multiple sober homes. I've tried living on my own a couple of times in an apartment complex and, uh, all that kind of stuff. And, you know, it's kind of tough, once you're alone. Um, so that kind of hits on the amount of people in the sober homes, um, is a huge, huge point. Uh, it's accountability. You make friendships with people that have the same intentions of all of us. Um, we support each other, we bring each other to meetings. I'm really big with the community and fellowship and, uh, creating events for this kind of stuff. And, um, you know, I've met a lot of great people out of it. Um, let's see here, uh, kind of on the case. Um, I'm in the basement with the four in the room with the one bathroom. It's actually a large room that probably not, I don't know the exact, um, how big it is, but it's roughly, I'd say ninety feet by twenty feet, which is almost two bedrooms by itself. Uh, it's a large room, we got a double shower. I've never had an issue since I moved in there. Uh, two walk-in closets, um, with plenty of room. It's connected right to the family room. Um, kind of the same with the kitchen. Uh, we don't all cook at the same time. I've never had an issue with it. We each have a, our own chore at the house that we do at least two to three times a week to keep the whole entire house clean, including mowing the grass, all that kind of stuff. Uh, honestly, if it wasn't for this sober home and the sober homes I've been with, um, I don't think I would've made it. I really don't, um, on my own. Uh, that's how big the AAA program is, and a lot of people don't really realize much about it. Uh, as far as us being addicts in a neighborhood, I know it's scary for the point of relapsing and stuff, but there's a lot of people that are, don't seek to get help, that live in the community, that get DWIs and drive home drunk. It's everywhere. Um, so just because we have a label of sober home on us, I don't think that's very fair. Um, but it is like a family. Um, I've also lived with family growing up, uh, in my late teens, with twelve people in the home, including parents, with one bathroom, and we made it work. Um, it becomes to the point where the people that are actually residing there, um, you know, we come to a conclusion with the stuff. Uh, it doesn't really affect the people outside. Um, in closing, as far as the parking goes, since I've been there, I've had to move my car once in the morning. Uh, we've figured it out to the times that people are leaving and coming that we park in a certain way where we only have one car on the street currently, and the rest of us, we don't have to really move in the morning at all. Um, so with that, uh, you know, with this opportunity, again, it gives us affordable housing where if I had to go to apartment, I wouldn't even be able to save for a house. I also have a CNC machine degree. I'm very, I work, I do a lot in the community, I do a lot of community events, I work for my church. Um, and a lot of us people that are going through recovery do a lot to service the community and do that kind of stuff. So, um, it's been great, and it gives us a second chance, and, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, did you say her name was Grant?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Dylan.
Dylan, thank you.
My name is Cara Roberts. I live at one, two, three, two, eight Gladiola Street, right across from the sober house. Um, I had a family member that was an addict, and with that life came a lot of fear. And I don't know that everyone in the sober house has as rough of a past as this person, but everything of value had been stolen from me. I had to buy my wedding ring back from the pawn shop. There was a kitchen I sit in in evidence somewhere because it was pulled on my husband. We got knocks at the door, um, at three in the morning, looking for this family member. So I know how hard sobriety is, and I respect everybody who does and is successful with that, but I also know the fears and the dangers. This family member went through treatment many times, sober for weeks, sober for months, and a relapse. We moved from our house because we were too scared to live there. Too many people knew where we lived. This house we're in now is supposed to be our forever home. We've lived there for four years, and it was supposed to be a fresh start. My family just got over all this stuff that we endured, and now there's a house bringing all that fear back. I can also attest to the traffic. I can attest, I worry about our property value. Um, but at the end of the day, I feel like increasing the number of tenants is also increasing the number of risk for the people that live on that street and in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeremy, and I am a current drug addict and alcoholic.
Hi, my name's Jeremy and I am a current drug addict and alcoholic. I've been in recovery for almost five years now, and I'm their business manager of Maraki Housing. I just want to say that I've been through it. I've been through the cities' version of this. And inside, you know, Minneapolis and St. Paul, I've lived in houses that have six of them. I've lived in houses that have ten of them. I've lived in houses that have twenty of them. The difference with this company and this house is the family atmosphere that we bring to it. The amount of people that we bring into it, we're selective in who we bring in, how we bring them in, what we do with them, and how we oversee everything that happens. I can understand everybody's fears and the issues that we've had. I've done it myself. I've been that person, but never in sober housing. When I'm in sober housing, or when I was going through treatment, that wasn't the way I wanted to be. I wanted to try and find help, get out of these things, do things better. The therapeutic environment that it's in is good for us. It's good for people to find the camaraderie of somebody struggling with the same issues, the same problems. There's, it's just, I can't say enough. I mean, there's so much goodness to it that why would we want to risk it, especially in a neighborhood like this? It's different that it's not in the city. It's nice because people are from the neighborhood. People in Anoka want a place to go in Anoka. People from Coon Rapids want a place to go in Coon Rapids. You know, they want to live where they came from. So, you know, just keep that in mind as you make your decisions. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, name and address for three minutes.
Hi, my name is Stacy Style. My address is 13110 Cary Street Northwest in Coon Rapids. I don't live in this neighborhood. I'm hoping to attempt to address a different perspective on this. I've worked with people who have been struggling with chemical dependency for the last twenty-two years of my career. The two main issues with long-term recovery are sober and safe housing and employment. Those are two of the biggest factors. I absolutely believe that people who are in recovery need a place to live, absolutely. My concern is, and my experience has been, is that it's often the sober houses that are actually abusing this vulnerable population. Sorry, I'm nervous. I've never been to a city council meeting, so. By charging large rent and basically at times keeping people in the sober housing just for the rent money that maybe are not appropriate fits. I have no idea what's appropriate to ask. My question is, when it went from six residents to ten, did the six people that were already there, was their rent decreased? I'm also concerned about the fact that the petitioner's lawyer said that at six, it is a financially stable option. And yet, Ms. Krista, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, said it's not. It's not feasible. It's six people. My other concern is that with long-term recovery comes people being held accountable. And that's accountable for everything, right? So, here we have a place that is trying to tell people how to live an accountable life that is not accountable. The fact that they have allowed themselves to violate the rules since four months after November shows that they're not holding themselves accountable. So, how are they actually teaching those skills to the clients who live there? So, and lastly, I just want to speak to background checks. Again, I work with felons. I have for the last twenty-two years. It's very hard for people with felonies on the record to get housing. So, what are the background checks being created for? What are they checking for? And what are they barring? Are there predatory offenders living in that residence? I don't know. And again, what are they checking for in the background? Because if we're not allowing felons to live there, then the likelihood of it being a very feasible long-term sober house is limited. That's all I have. That's just my perspective. Thank you.
If that's a question of counsel, we'll call you back up. That was her question. That wasn't our question.
Okay, I just wanted to correct the record. I said it was currently.
Thank you. All right, anybody else for the public hearing? All right, then we're going to close the public hearing. Reserve comments to counsel.
Your honor, I just have one thing.
Mr. Brody.
I do note, I thank everybody who came in for today's public hearing that spoke sort of for it and against it. I just want to caution those that were here and the counsel, obviously, that they're going to make the decision and have to make the decision based on the factors that we've outlined in our city code and outlined in that reasonable accommodation ordinance. And so, like I said, I do appreciate everybody coming in that they still do have to rely on those factors in making their decision. Thank you. I'm sorry, I have a couple other, just sort of points of clarification.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the record.
Keep us out of the trouble, Mr. Brody.
Well, no, this isn't even keeping us out of the trouble yet. A couple of things that were brought up, I mean, we had a lot of discussion about sort of the amount of activity over there. So, we had everybody saying from, "There's been no police activity," to, "It sounds like there's a lot of activity over there." I did have, did do a run of check a couple of days ago just to see. And I didn't think it was necessarily relevant because in the end, there was two police contacts over there. So, it isn't zero. It's not never. The police have been called over there for a couple of different incidences for a 911 hang-up. So, they had to respond to that to see why somebody had called 911. And then they went over there and had to find somebody from another agency. And that person was arrested on behalf of another agency. So, it hasn't been zero, but it's been two over the past, since the, since the Johnsons took ownership of the property in November. So, I just want to make that part of the record. I don't think necessarily that that bears into the conversation you're going to have, but I just want to make sure that that's clarified for everybody. That's all I have. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Robert Demmer?
So, a couple of things. When we get the staff's recommendation based on the findings, it's our job to go through the findings and see if we agree or disagree with the findings and find evidence for the agreement or disagreement. So, in this case, I do agree with the staff's findings, although I definitely did not take them lightly, right? So, I want to talk just a little bit about finding number two, and it kind of blends into finding number three. So, these are the findings that say that the request for ten people is or is not a reasonable accommodation. So, to be very clear, this is not saying anything about letting sober housing in or not letting sober housing in. We will not make rules that don't allow sober housing. That is not allowed. That is not okay. What this is, is this is something that says, "Is ten reasonable based on our prescribed limit of six?" So, if the six-person rule is reasonable, then is ten reasonable or unreasonable beyond that? So, reasonable accommodation says that you do need to make accommodations when people need accommodations. And so, I agree with the staff's finding that going from six to ten is an unreasonable request. But in order to get to that point, I had to think what I thought a reasonable request was. And so, a reasonable request is something that says, "The person with the disability cannot enjoy the community unless this request is fulfilled." So, what would a request to me be? And I would think about it the same way I would think of any other disability. If you had said to us, "There are six people in this house who are residents, but in order for them to enjoy the community, we had to hire a manager and that is our seventh person," that to me would be a reasonable request. And I will say that assuming all the other findings were in line with the way that the reasonable accommodation is written, if you had come and said, "We have six residents. We would like a seventh person," I would have supported that. Okay? Ten is just, it's a much larger percentage jump, and you're going over the number of residents just for having residents there. So, what I did then is I had to decide, all right, so is there a magic number around ten? This is not my area of expertise, although professionally I do read a lot of clinical case studies. So, I went to literature and read as many as I could, and I agree with the people who said that reading through the case studies, there was nothing that said ten is a magic number, six is a magic number, twenty is a magic number. However, the internet's large. I can't guarantee there's nothing out there, but I did that research. Since that's not my area of expertise and I did not find that, what I did find is that the key to success, so number one, I did find that sober houses are an important part of the chain of recovery and that they do better for success than people not in sober houses. And so, it is important that we make sure policy enables sober houses in a community, which means they're going to be in a neighborhood, which means they could be in your neighborhood or my neighborhood, just like any other, any other thing in society can be. But in this situation, there was nothing that made me believe that there was any evidence from the professionals that this was a minimum requirement. They did say that having a large number of people in your network who were sober was one of the keys to success. But the literature also says that if you have a higher chance of, mathematically, right, if you have more relapse rate, say fifteen percent, the more people you have in the house, the more chance you have of someone having a relapse. At some point, the numbers start to work against you in terms of having a network full of people who are sober. Because it's not my area of expertise, I did contact a former classmate of mine who is a PhD in psychology, who works at, or worked at a recovery center to get her opinion on the same topic. So, reaching out to expertise, when I mentioned the six versus ten, her professional opinion was that ten people sounded like too many as far as that same idea, that if you get too many, you have a higher risk of someone relapsing and affecting the rest of the group. So, she did not see a problem with our six, six-person limit, which again, made me feel like it was an unreasonable accommodation to go over that by a significant percentage. So, that is my interpretation of the staff's findings and why I agree with those specific findings, findings two and three. And so, that would be why I would end up voting to deny this specific reasonable accommodation request.
Thank you, Mr. Demmer. Anyone else want to weigh in? Counselor Robert Gadsden?
For me, this one was difficult in that I believe we need sober houses. I believe that we need to give people second chances. I believe that we all need to be good neighbors and understand that none of us is perfect and we all do things that maybe our neighbor doesn't like, that campfire in the backyard that smells, or smoking, or dogs barking, or taking out trash or loud music. I mean, so there's always things that we as neighbors have to come together and find ways that we can work together and have everybody, you know, be happy. And so, for me, having a sober house in a neighborhood is not a bad thing. I think it's good to have people that will integrate into the neighborhood and whatnot. There also then gets to be the point where you start looking at the impacts. And we have general city codes, and it has nothing to do if it's a sober house. If it's your normal house where you've got a large family and you've got two adults, parents, and six teens, and they all have cars, we still have that same problem of all of the cars around. And we have ordinances and things that we have to deal with that, right? It's, you got to be unparked on an improved surface. You can't park in the street overnight in the winter and because we want to have things plowed. To me, when I start looking at ten, there just isn't the space to be able to do this. And when we look at the reasonable accommodation rules, there, what am I accommodating? Is, I think, the point where it looks, and I think, you know, that Counselor Robert Demmer talked a little bit about that, that we need to be looking at, what is that thing that we're accommodating for? And if I'm accommodating for the disability, that's to have the sober house, to be able to have these places. The accommodation, just to have a bigger number, to me, doesn't quite fit. So, I applaud the sober houses. I applaud anybody who's going through that. I can tell you that I've had experiences within my family of people who have done this, and they're important. It's just, we've got to fit it within the rules that we have and make sure that it's meeting the same kinds of rules that we have for a lot of our other homes. So, at that point, I'm going to support the staff recommendation and deny the accommodation.
All right. Mr. Mayor? Counselor Robert Johnson?
So, I appreciate everybody who came in, and it takes a lot of gumption to get up in front of the city council and to share your views and to share your concerns and your fears. And so, I want to thank everybody who's a member of the community who came in to speak about it. And that includes Chad and Dylan and Jeremy and Ms. Johnson, who came in to talk about this. And I want to congratulate Chad and Dylan and Jeremy on their sobriety and their work toward that and the collaborative environment that they live in. As a prosecutor and a child-protection lawyer, we need sober houses in our community to reintegrate and allow for reentry of people who have run into difficulty, whether it be with their own sobriety or whether it be with a conjunction of their sobriety and the criminal justice system, to get back into our communities and to become productive and viable members of the community. I will say that after listening to this and listening to other council members here tonight who spoke up about it, I'm, I think I've decided that I'm going to support the staff recommendation. I do believe that some of the benefits that are being advanced are a little too conjectural. And I think the staff grounds for denying the requested accommodation are well-founded, in particular to this specific circumstance. But I do want to address the community a little bit about sober housing, and I've done that a little bit already, and you've heard me talk about it. But I want to give you the perspective of a child-protection attorney who works in the system. It is a difficult thing when I have to separate parents from children because of addiction. And sober housing is one of the tools that is part of the process of allowing people to be reunified with their children. And so, I want people to understand that while there are certain problems that come with that in this society, there are huge benefits. So, I heard the number of forty to sixty percent being advanced here, and it's a number I'm really quite familiar with because I hear it in court a fair amount, that there's a relapse risk for people with addiction in the forty to sixty percent range. Ms. Johnson is not wrong when she says that there's sometimes an eighty-five percent success ratio for people who have gone through, that you don't get to sober housing right away. You know, they've gone through usually outpatient or outpatient or both treatment, and they've begun their aftercare, they've demonstrated sobriety, and now they need the help stabilizing to get reintegrated back into society and sometimes to get their children back, in my experience. And it is this environment that creates support for them. I am not persuaded that ten is a tangible benefit over six in this house under these specific circumstances. And so, I'm going to vote in support of the staff recommendation. I also want to say to, in particular, I believe it's Chad and Dylan, who live there right now, you've now had an opportunity to hear from your neighbors. And right now, you've now had an opportunity to hear from your neighbors. And neighbors, you've got an opportunity to hear from them. And I would encourage you to use this opportunity to kinda come together and get to know each other a little bit better, because I think you're gonna find, as I have found over the years, dealing with people with these kinds of problems in their lives, we're not all that different. We really aren't. We're just going through different struggles at different times. I do wanna say, and I don't know how tonight's vote is gonna shape up, but I do wanna say that if it does turn in the scenario where the city council upholds the staff recommendation, and that means that we are favoring the code under the circumstance, and supporting the code, that that then creates a little bit of a dilemma that I didn't realize existed until tonight, which is, there might be ten people there right now. And so I just wanna send a message to city staff. I really don't wanna see anybody pushed out that's not ready to go out, and that there's not a plan for it. And so I understand the whole thing about people's concerns about what the code was, and whether there was some advantage taken or not. I really kinda don't care. From the perspective of, there are some people now that have a roof over their head, and have a... an environment, I would like a plan to... a supportive environment. I would like a plan to be put in place by city staff where those people are allowed kind of the grace to find an appropriate way to move out without maybe being backfilled, if that is the decision of the council. And I'm not trying to forecast that, but I really don't want people who are in a supportive environment right now to be pushed out of a supportive environment precipitously because of any decision the city council makes. And I hope we can get some comfort level that that won't happen if that is the vote of the council. So thank you for listening to me.
All right. Anyone else?
Hi, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
So I'd move in planning case nineteen dash sixteen that the city council deny the applicant's request for reasonable accommodation based on the stated findings.
I'll second. I'll defer to council.
Motion by Demmer, second by Wells. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I think Commissioner... Councilmember Johnson had a good point, that if this does pass in this motion, that we as a city need to be helpful to how we would transition back to that lower number, and ensure that people are moved out in a reasonable manner, and that we have a plan, and that we would work with the sober house to do that.
Right. Right, and I agree. It's not the residents' fault that they're out of code. But I will be voting to affirm staff recommendation. To us... I just drove by. You know, I just drove by, and there was two cars in the street, and the yard is a mess with all the mud, and you're just going, that just doesn't fit.
On that vein, I guess I would take the opposite approach. I don't wanna see this drag out, where we're lenient, and all of a sudden, six months from now, there's still ten in there. I don't think that'd be good faith on their part, and I think our ordinance is very accommodating. Six is a reasonable number, and I agree that it certainly isn't the residents' fault, but it's not the neighbors' fault either that they decided to put ten in there in violation of our ordinance. So I would like to see things move along, rather than drag out for a long period of time.
That's right. Yeah, I think we could find a balance. Not tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm looking for a plan.
Is really what it is. It's what's the plan? How do we move forward? So.
So it's the middle of... it's October fifteenth. Is it reasonable to do an end-of-the-year thing?
Your Honor, I guess we would probably... I'd ask that you leave it up to staff. Certainly, Mr. Hoffner and his client have other options as well that I assume they may be exploring, that may have some bearing on that. So I think if you just sort of... I think we'd get what council's position is from both Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Wells. So I think we have some idea that... how to figure that out, assuming the vote is to deny the accommodation.
Okay. Thank you. So in planning case nineteen dash sixteen, we have a motion to deny the applicant's request for reasonable accommodation based on the following findings. Did you want us to read those, or is this okay?
Just as stated.
Okay.
Assuming you're not changing them.
No. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Wells?
If I could just ask the question of the city attorney. Speculating that possibly there'd be an appeal, are we required not to enforce this as it's in the appeal process, even though we have an ordinance on the books?
At this point, it hasn't happened yet, so I think it's speculative as to what direction they may take. And so I would... will ask that question, or answer that question, if some sort of action comes forth that requires us to make a determination of whether we can continue to force this or not. So I apologize that I give you the attorney answer, but I think that's where we're at right now. And I just have one other thing, and I apologize, on my checklist of things that I was going to do during this particular matter, I forgot during the open hearing, we had one of the... we had two emails that we were gonna submit. One of the people actually spoke. I don't know if Mr. Hoffner has any objection if we include that one other email that was included. We were gonna submit that during the public hearing, if we can submit that in the record from, I believe it was Ms. Severson at one-two-three-three-six Gladiola. Just ask that that be made part of the record. Other than that, I think we're... this matter is complete.
Yeah. I mean, you said even before the public hearing that you were going to include those, so...
And we had sent it out previously to council.
All right. Very good. Item seven, conduct a public hearing and consider approval of non-domestic animal exhibition permit to animals of Walton's Hollow. The Community Strength Foundation is sponsoring the inaugural Rocky's Pumpkin Patch event, which will bring together local organizations that serve youth in the community. Attendees will have an opportunity to learn about the many athletic associations, clubs, and volunteer groups available here in the Coonrappas community. Trick-or-treating, free pumpkins, bounce houses, interactive booths, and concessions by the Coonrappas North Star Alliance will be offered at this event. Yep. Yep. Thank you. Please take it outside. All the applicable application documents have been submitted, including site plans, proof of necessary liability insurance, and animal health records. An approval of the issuance of the permit is contingent upon a successful background investigation. Community Strength Foundation is requesting that non-domestic animal exhibition permit fee of two ninety... background investigation fee of one twenty be waived, and the exhibition fee of two ninety be waived. City code dash six-zero-one requires that a public hearing be held by city council prior to the issuance of a non-domestic animal permit. Does anybody have any questions on this before we open the public hearing? Okay. With that, we are going to open the public hearing about the hosting non-domestic animals for the animal exhibition on October nineteenth at Rocky's Pumpkin Patch. Public hearing is open. Is anybody here to address council for the non-domestic animal exhibition permit? Anybody here to address council on that? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. And council.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
Do you wanna know what kind of animals?
Well, I assume goats.
Mr. Mayor.
Not like lions.
Not cats and dogs. Your typical petting zoo, small horses, goats, chickens, cute fluffy things. If I may, I'd like to state that we did mail notice of this public hearing to everybody within three hundred and fifty feet of the park boundary and heard from no one.
All right, then.
Councilmember Demmer?
I would move to approve a non-domestic animal exhibition permit to animals of Walton's Hollow at the Rocky's Pumpkin Patch event located at Sand Creek Park on October nineteenth for 2019, from ten AM to one PM, contingent on a successful background investigation, and move to approve waiving the permit fee of two hundred and ninety dollars and the background investigation fee of a hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Wells. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviaak?
If I could just ask, our legal... I mean, the liability insurance, in the odd event that someone gets bit by a horse or something happens on our city property, that liability insurance covers...
That's what it's intended for.
That's what it's for. Okay. I'm in favor.
Councilmember Johnson, you have a question?
I'm just gonna say I'm gonna rely on the city clerk that they're gonna be cute, fluffy, and harmless, non-domesticated animals.
Oh, no!
Nothing venomous or...
Exactly.
There should not be.
No alligators or anything.
No alligator. Unless it's really small.
These two intelligent people don't know what a petting zoo is.
I was getting some advertising in.
I'm well acquainted with petting zoos, having two daughters, but I'm also well acquainted with the petting zoo that shows up with an alligator and a tarantula, so...
Reptile garden.
No, that was not on the list.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, and the other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item eight, consider planning case nineteen dash thirteen, consider adoption of ordinance twenty-two-twenty-seven regulating self-storage facilities. Let's see. All right. Does anybody need anything on this? Again?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
You know, this, to me, is one of the major steps based on the moratorium that was put in place, and for self-storage facilities, and this new ordinance looks to make sure that we are putting those kinds of structures and uses in the places that make more sense, and looking at the available land that we have within the city. I also believe that we're gonna be looking further to look at design standards and things like that, that some new uses have an effect on how our design standards could be interpreted, and we'll look at those other pieces later. But this, I think, is a great first step, and it allows us to move forward, and then eventually, once we get this actually, if it passes, that moratorium, in my understanding, would be ending, correct?
That's a good question. I think that's what we wanted to sort of ask with council, is that's the direction. I think probably the best way would be to simply bring back an ordinance to repeal that, and we can probably bring it back by next council agenda. I'm gonna have to brush up on repealing ordinances, but we can do that if that's what the council's direction is.
So I would think that that would depend on the vote, but at this point...
It does, correct.
I would make a motion in planning case nineteen dash thirteen to adopt ordinance twenty-two-twenty-seven, amending definitions and regulations relating to self-storage facilities and authorize summary publication of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Discussion? When does our moratorium expire? You remember?
Well, it was six months, and it started in beginning of September, so beginning of March.
Oh, so it's still quite a place out there, yeah. Okay. All right, very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Under new business, consider resolution nineteen... What did I do?
Did we include in that motion? We can't recall whether to include summary publication of that ordinance?
I stated that.
All right, thank you.
Just making sure.
Apologize.
She read the whole thing.
I was thinking about repealing ordinances.
We were working on repealing.
All right. So we're on motion nine... I'm sorry, motion. Agenda item nine, to consider resolution nineteen dash one-ten, calling for a public hearing on proposed property tax abatement. And this is... I don't know. Does somebody wanna summarize what we went through with the workshop, or...
Yeah, this is to refinance and lease revenue bonds that the city has been holding since 2010. They're callable in February of 2020, and so if we go forward with refinancing these, they'll become GO bonds with a lower interest rate, and save the city not only interest, but a lower levy on this issue.
GO bonds, general obligation bonds...
General obligation bonds.
Rather than... What are they now?
Lease revenue bonds.
Lease revenue bonds. Okay, thank you. All right. Councilmember Demmer?
Move to adopt resolution nineteen dash one-one-zero, calling for a public hearing on Wednesday, November sixth, 2019, for the consideration of authorizing a property tax abatement in connection with the issuance of tax abatement bonds.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. Discussion?
This is just a motion to do a public hearing, so we'll discuss the public hearing, right?
Well, make sure we don't have any questions before we get out there.
I'm just letting the folks know at home. They wanna come talk about a public hearing on tax abatement bonds.
Saving money.
All right.
Mayor?
Councilmember Grisgoviaak?
Educate the folks at home. We just had the meeting on this beforehand, but what this does is it basically refinances at the same term. We're not adding any term on this. We're gonna maybe see a savings of ninety-five thousand dollars a year in interest, so it's significant for our city, a significant piece of savings, quite a few benefits, and I would be in favor of this.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item ten, looks like you're getting ready to go shopping early again, Mr. Hammer. Consider purchase of trackless MT. Now, we always used to mark tanks MT when they were out of gas. What does MT stand for in this place?
It's a municipal tractor. It's just a general-purpose municipal tractor.
General-purpose municipal tractor?
Yes.
All right. So we're looking at purchasing two trackless municipal tractor sidewalk machines with attachments at a cost of three hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars. They'll replace a couple of units that we already have, of which one will be retained as a backup slash reserve, and the other sold. We're looking for authorization now, so the order can be placed immediately with delivery to occur in December 2019 for use this winter plowing season, assuming we're gonna have a plowing season this year, huh?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am.
For me, it's hard to remember.
All right. Anything you wanna talk about here, or we could just kinda cover it?
I think you covered it well, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
All right.
Just so unclear.
It's two for three hundred thousand, right?
Correct.
Okay. I can't wait to see one of these things. But don't keep the sidewalks clean, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Demmer?
Move to authorize the purchase of two replacement sidewalk tractors with attachments.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviaak?
All in favor of clearing sidewalks, of course, and... But, and this is in the 2020 budget. So I'm just wondering, how do we... If we're gonna order now, take delivery in December, payment is due on delivery, how is this going to affect the 2020 budget? This is coming out of 2019 budget. Are we going to adjust 2020 before it's finalized? Councilmember Grisgoviaak, members of the council, this is basically stating that we're gonna spend... we're amending the budget to spend it in 2019, knowing that the money will be there in 2020. So we're basically pre-purchasing. I guess what this says is, when November comes, or when you vote finally, is it November or December, on the final budget for 2020, that you probably wanna keep these items in that budget.
If we approve them tonight.
Well, the next question would be, were they being paid for right in December? What fund did it come out of in December of 2019?
Mr. Stemato, or?
Yep.
Between Fran and I, I mean, it's important to note that this comes out of capital equipment, which already holds a reserve, so we sort of try to build up that account over time, so when we have larger purchases, we can levy an amount every year and don't have to kinda swing back and forth, depending on what those purchases are. So there's already funding there to make the purchase. When we have the... When the levy is enacted for 2020, that'll just sort of go to resupplant the money that was already used.
It'll replenish your reserve.
So it's a net zero on our 2020 proposed budget. This'll actually... That money will go back into the reserve fund to kinda pay it back.
Yeah. And I'll look at Fran to make sure I explain that fairly well enough.
And it's actually a deduct of roughly thirteen thousand dollars.
And we're saving thirteen thousand.
So there's a thirteen thousand to the plus for 2020, on paper.
All right. Those are my questions. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item eleven is to consider an introduction... Item eleven is to consider an introduction of ordinances revising fees for two thousand and twenty. Let's see here. I read through this and trying to recall. Mr. Stemwells are, anything you want to highlight in here? I mean, it's just an introduction, so it's, it was pretty minimal.
Sure. Mayor, council, I'll just make note, this, this one does encompass a lot of different types of fees. Some of the fees are dictated by state statute, others are controlled by the city of Coon Rapids. We did generally look at some of our fees from the standpoint of essentially a cost of living increase, but we did make, take some discretion with that, conserve a rounding factor if it made sense just to keep the number as it was for two thousand and nineteen. Some of them stayed the same. In other cases, it was rounded up. I will make one other sort of note that in two thousand and eighteen, staff did go through a pretty comprehensive look at our fees in general and made some, you know, one-time adjustments to those fees about this time last year. And, and so for the most part, we feel like the fees are in a good place, you know, relative to other cities or from a standpoint of paying for the cost of the activity that's associated with it, staff time, things like that. So with that, unless there are any other comments from staff.
Mr. Brody, we have, item one is introduction, item two is introduction, item three is set a public hearing. Do we need a motion on that or do we?
We probably do need a motion on the public hearing one.
Okay, all right. So let's, so if there's no other questions of staff, let's consider an ordinance to revise certain license fees, service fees, and related charges effective January first, two thousand and twenty introduced. And let's consider an ordinance establishing permit and inspection fees for the building inspections division effective January first, two thousand and twenty, introduced. And, Councilmember Johnson?
I'll move for a public hearing for, what is it, November sixth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven p.m. regarding the fee increases for on-sale three-point-two malt liquor, off-sale three-point-two malt liquor, tavern license, and on-sale intoxicating liquor license.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify, what?
Just one quick thing.
Councilmember Demmer?
If you could maybe bring some comparisons to other cities to that meeting, if it's a public hearing, I could see that coming up.
Gosh, I thought he was going to ask for.
Nope, that's it. That's it.
Samples of the malt liquor.
Nope.
Just in case.
Specifically the difference between three-two and.
Nope. Just, I can imagine someone coming saying, why'd you raise it? And I want a comparison to everybody.
All right. Any other discussion? Other than this is another good time to remind everybody that the meeting is Wednesday, November sixth.
And to vote for school board on Tuesday the fifth.
There you go. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And then, let's see, we're going to send a little, spend a little fire department money tonight, Chief Piper? We're going to consider, item twelve is to consider resolution nineteen dash one-hundred, amending the budget for the fire department SCBA bottles, self-contained breathing apparatus bottles for the fire department. Do you want me to read these articulated discussion points or do you want to tell us why we're spending money on, on the, thanks?
Mayor, council, the SCBAs are the air packs that we wear when we go into a hazardous environment. The air packs are maintained by firefighters here in Coon Rapids. Recently, we had a switch in the personnel of who does that. When we sent the two new people to class to learn how to do it, they found that the bottles expire after fifteen years. And after checking with the three different agencies, DOT, NFPA, and NIOSH, you know, difference of opinion about what you can do at that point. Long story short, we looked at what it would mean to have them recertified and the costs associated with that. And the decision was that it was in the city's best interest to purchase new bottles. And, and that's basically what we're talking about here tonight.
So these are scuba bottles without the underwater part.
Correct. All right. So, so are we, do we have a trigger in the budget now for fifteen years from now so that we know to replace them again?
We will make sure that happens, Mayor.
Well, I mean, if you're still here as chief, you know.
I haven't set a date, I'm not sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to authorize RS nineteen dash one-hundred amending the two thousand and nineteen capital equipment fund budget for the purchase of SCBA bottles for approximately a hundred thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Guskowiac?
Is this something that would then be adjusted in the proposed two thousand and twenty budget, kind of similar to what we just talked about? That's my first question.
Yeah, I can, I can address that. In the, in the two thousand and nineteen budget, we had budgeted for portable and mobile radios for the fire station. They discovered they didn't need as many radios as they first anticipated, and we also got a discount on them. So there was budget money available in that fund that we just reassigned now to this, to the bottles. So there will be no, no effect on the two thousand and twenty budget.
Okay. That was my first question. The second question is, what was the cost of recertification for the bottles?
I don't have, Councilmember Guskowiac, I do not have that, but it was a pretty significant cost. And as I said before, there's three different agencies that have jurisdiction on this and there was some disagreement about whether they could be or not. And between the cost and that disagreement, we didn't think it was a wise choice to go down that path.
Makes sense. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are up to the open mic public comment portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to address council for open mic? No? You guys are hanging in there, though.
Sure are. Double badges.
I think all the blue shirts had to go home to bed. I think the leaders are ready to go home and go to bed.
The ice cream store just closed.
All right. So anybody here to address council for open mic? Seeing none, we'll move forward from there. We don't have any reports on previous open mics. And we are at other business. Any other business to come before council this evening?
Your Honor, I have a question regarding Foley. Do we have any updates on Foley Boulevard?
That's a great question. Councilmember Kicker, we have three updates to get to.
Perfect. One of which was Foley Boulevard, yes. They got the first culvert complete. They're working on the second one. We hope and anticipate by the end of this week, we'll be in a condition that while the entire road won't be complete and open, we would at least have two safe passable lanes that we would be able to, to open Foley Boulevard. So that is number one. The second is Hanson Boulevard. The, the final completion on the overpass was to occur, I believe, this Friday. There's been some delays, obviously some weather and other things. Well, as opposed to coming to you every couple of weeks and going, it's a little longer. We said, let's wait till the end. Let's get a real date that we can stick to. And so that was just released here earlier this week about, now instead of, as Mr. Mayor said, before Thanksgiving, we'll get it, or before Halloween, we'll get it before Thanksgiving. So that is the second item. And then the third is what you had just recently talked about under the previous council memo item there is the pumpkin patch that's occurring at Sand Creek this Saturday. Come on down, trick-or-treating, it's a free event, bouncy houses, take home a pumpkin, just enjoy a free community event. Hopefully that answered some of the rest of your questions and I'm happy to be done with my other business.
And when you say, and when you say Hanson is opening by Thanksgiving, you're talking the day before Thanksgiving, the Wednesday, the twenty-seventh.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I'll be able to get to mom's. All right.